...work session of March 22nd, 2011. This is true for the remaining people in town. The second agenda item is citizen comments for issues that are not on the work session. Do we have anybody that's wanting to make a public comment? I see none, we'll continue to move on. I'm going to alter the agenda just a little bit. I want to take items six through 10 and see if anyone has any comments about these special events and any questions. If not, we'll move on to number three. Six through 10.
Wait a minute, six is the sewer.
I'm sorry.
Seven.
Seven through 10, my apologies. Everybody good with that? Okay, now we're ready for...
Mayor, I guess just one thing. I guess seven and eight. We've got one end of the town, eight and nine, I guess it is. So we've got this end of town shut down, and we've got the other end of town shut down. Doesn't matter. But we want to make sure, have we done anything for the rodeo? Have you seen them?
We just got their application the other day. So they'll be on your next agenda.
Okay.
Same date?
It's on the rodeo.
May 14th.
Fourteen. Okay, so none of those dates can conflict with the rodeo.
And no mushroom, they just take the quadrant in front of the mushroom. So it doesn't affect traffic around the square.
So they don't shut it down?
Right.
Good enough.
And the others probably in the morning, early.
Yeah, no, it's early morning.
Is everybody good with that? That satisfy your class?
Got it.
Seven through 10.
Seven through 10. Great, we'll move on to presentation of a Blue Bag Public Service Announcement. We have a special guest with us. I hope your grandmother's watching.
All right, this is Courtney Rogers. And I'm Melissa Rieser. And we're just two people of our Leadership Franklin Group. And Dr. Shawna Jackson and Dr. Ray White could not be here. Dr. Ray White may come a little later. But this is our project that we did. And we wanted to do something on the blue bag education. We went over and met with Becky, and we went to the facility and toured the facility. A Vanderbilt graduation student, grad student, actually did a survey about the blue bag program. And found, one of the survey questions was, why are people not recycling? And one of the answers, the top answer, was they did not know what to put in the bag. And when we met with Becky, one of the things that was going pretty well was the participation, about 38 percent. But the diversion rate was a little bit low, at about 12 percent. So our group decided that we wanted to target the people that were actually participating in the blue bag program and get them to recycle more because maybe they didn't know all of the things that they could put in the blue bag. So this is the plan. We wanted to raise the diversion rate and participation. The current stats, 38 percent participation and 12 percent diversion rate, which we just got new numbers from Becky this evening. And it's 38.14 percent now and 12.20 percent diversion rate. And so hopefully it's because, a little bit because of our program. We wanted to create a video with a celebrity, reach out to local schools, develop a magnet for citizens to reference easily on their refrigerator. We've given them the brochures, and you all have the magnets in front of you. And we also wanted to post it, the video, the city's YouTube site and other social media sites. Courtney is a social media guru, so...
Definition, I mean, participation is one thing. What is diversion? Help us to understand.
Amount of waste that's being diverted from the land.
Okay, okay. I thought I was operating.
And that's measured against what, last year's?
Which?
Last year's tonnage or something other?
Yes. Is that how that's measured, Becky?
Per ton. I think we pay $24 and something a ton.
It's tonnage, it's tonnage based on what we collect per week from residential households.
Versus?
For one week, we would look at what we actually collected in garbage versus what we collected in the blue bags.
Oh, no, sorry.
The garbage goes down and the blue bag goes up.
Yeah. I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but it is good, I think, to clarify that while you're on it. Because I think people watching at home too, this is really important. So 12 percent is being diverted from our landfill, which saves us a cost of, how much per ton? $24 and?
Well, the tipping fee is $25.50.
Twenty-five fifty for the tipping fee per ton. So that's really, you know, that's why, I just want to make sure we all understood that.
And all this information's in the video as well. We break it down by price.
You're going to see exactly how much you save in two minutes. So we did a press release, and we talked about the Vanderbilt survey and the question of why people aren't recycling. We went to Columbia State because Dr. Shawna Jackson works for Columbia State. And she volunteered her film crew technology program on Williamson County campus. And they did an awesome job on the video. It's really professional and looks wonderful. We approached the Franklin Special School District, and they were very cooperative. The same day that we approached them, they said, yes, we'd love to run your video. And it goes out to the elementary school children with their video programs that they get every morning for the month of March and April. And then we reached out to social media with our YouTube side and our website. And that's Courtney's business. That's what she does for a living. So she's, we were able to reach more than 10,000. That was our goal, and we'll tell you what, how many people we reached in a moment. We developed the reference magnet, and that's going to go out in the utility bills in the next two cycles. And so they'll have that right in their utility bill. And there'll be some wording on the utility bill too, referencing the magnet. And then we recruited News Channel 5 anchor Franklin and Franklin resident Steve Haislip to be our local talent. And then there's the magnet that you have in front of you. And that's basically the same from our brochure.
It's good. And it was less waste.
Looks good.
You're right.
And then there's the video. We'd like to roll the video for you, please.
This is excellent.
Hi, I'm Steve Haislip with News Channel 5, and I'm a blue bagger. I live in Franklin and participate in the city's blue bag recycling program. The city's getting a great response, but we need to do better. The program can only continue if we divert more of our trash into the blue bag. Here in the kitchen, I've made it pretty simple. I've got my trash can here. Nearby, I have the blue bag. Now, at first, I put the everyday recycling items in my blue bag, which is newspapers or plastic. But there are many, many other things that can go in the blue bag. Take a look at this resident's trash first. There are a lot of things here that this resident could have recycled. Like this cereal box in the blue bag, tissue box in the blue bag, shampoo bottle, these are recyclable too. Soup can in the blue bag, yogurt container in the blue bag, microwave dinner buns with tray, just rinse it, it can go in the blue bag too. But remember, glass and styrofoam are not recyclable. Let's do the math, people. It costs the city, and yes, you, the taxpayer, $700 per trip to take 20 tons of trash to Murfreesboro. And the city does this at least a dozen times a day. A whole month costs about $168,000. Stop sending your hard-earned tax dollars to Murfreesboro. You can keep costs down by recycling.
You see, if we send more blue bags here to the recycling center in Franklin, it doesn't cost the city a dime. Only operating costs to pick up the blue bags. Therefore, maintaining our low cost for trash and recycling services in the city and preventing cost increases and saving you money in the future.
Just look at all these things that are going to the landfill that could have been recycled. Cardboard boxes of all sizes, plastic candy layer containers, laundry detergent bottles, and aluminum foil. We, the taxpayer, pay $700 for each load. We're basically throwing our money away. Each time we put something like this into the trash instead of the blue bag. So every time you put something in the blue bag rather than the trash, you can think of it as money in your pocket. And don't forget that it's good for the earth and future generations.
Very nice. Great.
So far, we've had two newspaper articles on Williamson Herald, and we're expecting one in The Tennessean, hopefully.
When he awakens.
And we have had one television news story, and hopefully we'll get a couple more on Channel 5. The viewership up for the television story on News Channel 4 was 225,415. And the publicity value of that is $4,400. Two radio interviews with about 40,000 listeners. I know the mayor did an interview about it, and Courtney did an interview about it on WAKN. And we believe so far we've reached about 37,000 people via social media. And if you'd like to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, basically, using the city's social media sources and then mine and the different social media gurus that I've been in touch with, I just basically asked them, could you please put this on your Facebook page? Could you retweet this? So that it's not just in this little circle of Franklin, but there are thousands and thousands of followers who are now getting that information. And I think, how many YouTube hits did we get the first day?
The first day, we had about, in 24 hours, 100 YouTube hits. So far, it's 260 YouTube hits.
Basically, yeah, the whole thing, the whole project was just our time. It was donated time, and it was completely free. And then using the social media as well, we're really getting the word out there.
We got it in my child's school newsletter.
Oh, good. Good. So will this be going out to Williamson County schools at all? Do you plan to do that in the future?
Yeah, we already in there, we're not in their schools, but we've approached them. They say they're going to do it, they're just...
They'll get there eventually. They've got a bunch of schools in the city.
They will, they will participate. They've already said.
And our goal is to keep track of this too. So not, when Leadership Franklin is done, we're not going to just end. We're even talking about starting our own Facebook page, our own Twitter account, and keeping track of it and gauging it quarterly, most likely to see, keeping track of that diversion rate to make sure that we actually reach our goal.
And who developed and filed?
I was sure, Melissa, all this was done with volunteer and donations and, I mean, is there any costs associated?
There was, the city did pay for the magnets and for the mailing and the utility bills.
And so who did it?
Our Leadership Franklin did it.
And who did the sound?
And the fastest class.
And who did the video?
Columbia State. Their film technology crew on the Williamson County campus.
They did a good job.
Reed Ridley is the professor out there. So special thanks to them. They do that for free for us.
I hope you got an A+ with Mrs. Cross.
We shut down that one.
Any other questions? That's great.
Excellent.
Thank you. Next is item number four, presentation on the oil supply and price environment. This is particularly important because of the rising gas prices. And also, we have an interest because of the fuel hedging program we're in. And we have Kier Parkinson, who is a Franklin resident, has a long history of working with the oil industry, and now is with one of our local banks. And he has kids that have gone to school here. His wife is a retired teacher. And he's a great guy, and he's got one son that's really brilliant. He's an orthopedic surgeon. He's a great young man.
Yeah.
You're welcome, Kier. Did you have everything you need?
I do.
Good.
And I'm here because of you. He has helped my son on several occasions, and I really appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Very much so. Yes, I've been here 32 years now. And when I started in the oil and gas business, I started right here in this building, and I was about where Andrew sits today. That was where my office was, the old, I think, the fire chief's office. We had an office there for six years. And the thing I wanted to do today, I had given a talk to the Sustainability Commission on Mayor Moore's request, and they asked, they suggested I get to talk to you, and that's why I'm here. As a resident, I want you to know what I know, and even more if I can. But what I've done is put together a presentation of things that I don't think many of you know, or you haven't heard, or you haven't been exposed to. So let me see if I can figure out how this works. Whoa. You can't press it that many times, can you? I like this slide. I saw it in a Washington DC presentation. The puppy really doesn't know what he's about to get into. He thinks he's a lot bigger. But as you can see, my presentation really is about sharing some thoughts with you so that when you think through it, it is what you, maybe you have confidence in. I don't want to waver your confidence, but I want you to be exposed to some of the things. I'm going to start with a slide I put together where David O'Reilly, the chairman and CEO of Chevron, you know, about seven, eight years ago, you couldn't get the presidents, CEOs, and head executives of oil companies to say what he's saying. But, because it's not good for their stock prices. But what he is telling you is that one thing is clear, the era of easy oil is over. And when he talks about, we went through our first trillion barrels in the first, in 125 years, and we'll go through the next trillion at the rate we're using it today, 1,000 barrels a second. We'll go through that in the next 30 years. I wanted to address the fact that, to me, oil and petroleum products are industrial oxygen of the world right now. This particular graph shows you the population of the world, starting in 1 AD and moving to about 210. And when you look at this slide, I want you to notice the population never got above a billion in, of the world until about the 1800s. You notice the oil curve when it was first discovered in 1856 in Pennsylvania and parts of Russia. We began really having discoveries in that timeframe. I want you to notice how they parallel each other. And parallel is important, maybe it's food that has, the petroleum products has helped the population growth. Because from natural gas, we get our pesticides and our fertilizers. And we can now grow 64 acres, 64 bushels of corn on an acre, whereas we could only get maybe six or eight bushels out of use of manure, excuse my language. Dr. James Schlesinger was at a conference that I was at in DC in Washington. This is not the picture, but his quote is there. He was our first energy czar, our first energy secretary. And of course, he's a very accomplished gentleman. He made the statement that, given the projected world decline curves running from 4% to 6%, and the projected increase in demand over the next quarter century, we're going to need to have the capacities of five Saudi Arabias. What is a decline curve? I put a bunch of decline curves up here for you to look at in a minute. Here's some of our biggest offshore fields in Gulf of Mexico. A decline curve really is nothing but the production curve. It always starts out, and it goes up, and it meets a certain peak, and then it starts, and it starts to decline. Not unlike a shaving cream bottle, it's some can, at some point, you're going to be out of shaving cream. That's what happens to a reservoir. All of these fields, and by the way, everything that I have here, especially for you, I have slides here. You're welcome to go and look up any one of these things, Google it, and you'll pick up any, the information on any one of these fields in US Gulf of Mexico. The thing about oil and gas discoveries, I want you to think a second about, is any given region, wherever it is in the world, the kings and the queens are found first. The bigger fields are so big, they have to be discovered. My point is that this, the green little curves that are, we'll say are bell-shaped curves, are where you've found a field, and then you find the big field. And if you'll notice, I'm pointing here on these, the ones over here, the big field is the one that is found second. And then the fields get smaller and smaller, and then you see the collective production curve that comes out of that region there is the bell-shaped curve. What is that important for? Because that is what happens in oil and gas all over the world. It doesn't last forever. It's not the Beverly Hillbillies. The production will decline. Couple more comments, just adding credence. Shell's president, excuse me, former Shell chairman, said that it's pretty clear that it's not much chance of finding any significant quantities of new cheap oil. I want you to know, I'm not here to talk about we're running out of oil. I am warning you that it is getting tougher. But we're running out of cheap oil. The easy stuff is what he's addressing. Any new or unconventional oil is going to be very expensive. And then, of course, Exxon chief says something similar, a spokesman, excuse me. If you look at this ad, I mean, this ad, this, wish I had as good a video as that blue bag had. That was awesome. What, I want to share with you something that you need to, you probably haven't thought about this, but what is an obvious trend that we all know, but we totally ignore? And you'll see why I have the picture. In 1901, we found the biggest oil field in the United States, the first big oil field, Spindletop. And I put together a slide that shows the dress code of that day. That's what the oil field looked like. I want you to notice the red circles showing the oil geyser. And right below it, if you can read it, it says a lubricating oil field, a lubricating field. You know, cars weren't abundant, it wasn't about gasoline, it was about, about lubrication. That's what they called it. But I want you to note in the orange, that's the critical numbers I want you to look at a second. That field was found at 1,132 feet deep. Let's scroll forward to last year, the BP Macondo well. We all know about it. It's, I used it as a good example. Gulf of Mexico, that Deepwater Horizon rig was quite a, quite a rig. There it sits on the lower right, but you see what happened to it. I want you to notice that that rig was drilling in 5,000 feet of water, 18,000 feet from the, from the seafloor to the reservoir. And so I think what I'm trying to show you is that in the 109 years since Spindletop, I want you to look at the trend. The low-hanging fruit is pretty much gone. Believe me, BP would be drilling somewhere else if they could make the economics work because that was a, that was a test, right there, 5,000 feet of water, 18,000 feet. Sure, there were some things they could have done differently, and they, I guarantee they'll be doing it differently. But you can see the trend. It's just getting a little harder to find. Here's the evolution of oil and gas. Actually, it started out with seeps. The type A was, it literally seeped to the surface. And a lot of you'd be surprised, 90% of the oil that originally was in place in the world over the millions and millions and hundreds of millions of years, seeped to the surface, and we only have about 10% of what we once had in the ground. That's a surprise to a lot of people. But the seeps were how we used it back in the days of the Romans and anywhere else. We started drilling for it, that'd be type B. It was getting, it was easy to drill, fairly shallow. And then you get to type C, you start drilling deeper, and you're in water. Then you go very deep. And then type, type D, you're starting to slip over the curve, you're starting to get into the expensive area. You're now looking at, you're looking at areas where you're drilling directionally. You're pinpointing things, you're going horizontal, you're, that's expensive. And what's going to be next? Who knows? It's going to get more expensive. For all of you, if you can remember the 2010 JOE report, that stands for Joint Operating Environment, put together by the United States Military Joint Forces Command. You can go on Google. I have a, for all of you, I have this here, you don't have to copy anything. But if you want to go put 210, 2010 JOE report, you'll pull this report up and you can print it out. If you'll note what our military said, "The discovery rate of new petroleum and gas fields over the past two decades provides little reason for optimism that the future efforts will find major new oil fields." That's pretty bold for them to say that, but you can go read that. I put together this slide of world field discoveries by decade. And the key I want you to see is that as we started in the drilling, the fields in the second column, the number producing oil wells are in the fourth column. The last column is the average daily production from the results of that drilling. This is all done by decade. You'll note that the 1960s, we found the most oil. 1970s, excuse me, 1980s, we found the most fields. And of course, 1990s, we found the fewest wells, but we did find some fairly good production. By then, we're moving offshore, things are getting a little bigger. But I wish you would take a look at, from 2000 to 2006, we had very poor results around the world. We're not finding the fields that we did. And for those of you who would prefer to look at it differently, here it is in a bar chart. Again, you notice it looks a little bit like a bell-shaped curve. I want to talk to you about three things that I think you should know about, things that are important. We're going to talk a minute about peak oil. We're going to talk about, are the world's oil reserves, the estimates accurate? That's a very interesting, I want you all to think about what I just said. Are the reserves you hear about in paper and talking heads and everyone knows, wherever, are they accurate? And what is the status of largest producing fields in the world today? Let's look at that. The US Energy Information Administration shows the production in the United States. You'll note in 1970, we topped, we peaked. The United States peaked in 1970. That's, that's a long time ago. That's 41 years ago. We made more oil in that year than we have made since. We now make about 45% to 50% of what we did then, and we've been drilling like crazy. Even Prudhoe Bay, when it came online, it pulled us up some, but then it started declining. Now we've got the Deepwater Gulf of Mexico, and it's beginning to help a little, but the, the problem is the, the older fields are waning a little bit. Are we, are we by ourselves? No. The US has got 63 other countries that have also peaked. In other words, we're not making as much as they did at one time. Some just peaked, some peaked a long time ago, like us. Remember, the United States led the world in oil and gas exploration and technology. We still do. We have, we have all the capabilities of the world. And we have a world of reserves. Let's look at the comment on the oil reserves, are they accurate? I'm talking about the world oil reserves. This particular little kind of elementary-looking chart came from a white paper written called "The End of Cheap Oil" by Colin Campbell and John LaHare. He, those two gentlemen are two of the top geologists and geophysicists in the world. They're easily recognized that way. They wrote this thing, and this is one of, I'll pull one of their, their diagrams out, and I'm going to talk about it. But I want you to notice what he says, "A suspicious jump in reserves reported by six OPEC nations, adding 300 billion barrels of oil to the tallies of reserves of their country, following no major discoveries." I was sitting in my desk, right here, in 1985, '86, when all this started happening. In fact, I could be sitting in Andrew's desk right now, about where I was. I picked up on what was going on right then. And, you know, they tried to write it off as it's all about technology. It's all about, we can recover more so we can up our annies. And people kind of got over that, and they thought, that's fine. But I want to show you something about this slide. Look at the, they went, the six nations of the Middle East, and they're all written there on the right, went from 400 billion barrels to 700 billion barrels in a stroke of a pen. Is that accurate? Can you do that without any discoveries? Just because you say technology came to your aid? How much is 300 billion barrels? That's more than all the United States has ever had, and 40% more. Those six nations just wrote it up. And for years, they've produced 2 to 5 billion barrels a year out of some of their countries, and never reduced their reserves. And they keep making all of you feel very comfortable, everything's wonderful. I'm not here to be Chicken Little. I don't mean to say all this in such a way that you just give up. We're not running out of oil. But I don't want you to have the panacea that we just keep marching forward without, with, it's, you know, it's time to act and do something about alternatives and everything else we can. Just want you to be aware of this. This just summarizes the fact that you can see, basically, the decline was based upon, there, the green shows where the indicated reserves are, but the reported reserves right the green shows where the indicated reserves are, but the reported reserves, right there in that area that you can see, right there, they moved those up very dramatically. So, the last point there was, what is the status of the world's largest producing oil fields? So, you're going to get to talk about four fields, the largest in the world. And I went back to 2004 to look at those. They are, the name of the fields are Gwar and Saudi Arabia is by far larger than any other field in the world. 72 miles long, 36 miles wide, 33 miles wide. It was producing 4.5 million barrels by itself in 2004. That's just about what the United States produces, to think about how big that is. Cantorale in Mexico was producing 2 million barrels a day. That's in the Bay of Compeche. And the Bergen Field in Kuwait, one of the great old fields of the world, it's 60 years old, by the way, was producing 1.7 million. And Daqing is in China, and it is, was producing a million barrels. So, those are the four largest fields in 2004. Let's look at today. Gwar has actually moved up a little. It's at 5 million. Cantorale has dropped three-quarters. It fell out of, it just went into decline and just went in a tailspin. It's at a half a million barrels and it was at 2 million barrels. The Bergen, excuse me, the Bergen Field has peaked now and is starting to decline some. And the China field is unchanged. They're drilling more wells there, called density drilling. So, that is the status. But you'll notice only Saudi Arabia's been able to improve production. By the way, Gwar has 3,400 wells in it. You know, as we talk about, this subject is about price, about gas and gasoline prices, because that's the freedom and the mobility that all of us have. Whether you blame high prices on the Congress and the President for not keeping prices in check, or Saudi Arabia and OPEC for not producing enough oil, or the oil companies for making record profits, Wall Street speculators for betting on higher prices, some groups even blame American driver for their thirst for gasoline. Whatever you want to blame, the point is, we need to deal with the facts. And I think that what I wanted to share with you, and I grabbed this part at the top of this slide this morning off Google, off the Internet. But I believe that we're into a future cycle of this. I think when you get a supply crunch, like before 2008, when the world was just hitting on all cylinders, China, India, everybody's growing, the demand is going out the roof, the production couldn't keep up with it. And you get a supply crunch. You just can't keep up. Because I believe what I'm telling you, that every time we get oil and gas supply spikes, which occurs next, you find yourself in a recession. The recovery comes next. We're somewhere coming out of a recession right now. All of us wish it'd be coming a little bit quicker. But even the government admits oil prices could trigger the next recession. So, oil is important. But this slide is important because it shows you all the price spikes in red, if you can see the red, and the gray bars represent a recession. So, except for the one that occurred in '95, we had a recession almost every time we had a price spike in oil. So, my summary, I guess, is that oil supply peaked in the world in May of 2005. I'm talking about crude oil. I'm not talking about total oil, because we're turning some gas liquids into oil and refinery liquids. So, we are making about 84, 85 million barrels today, but we're only making about 73 million barrels of crude out of the ground. Back in '85, we made about 75 million. So, the world, as far as I know, peaked in May of 2005. The world is declining, the production is declining at about 5% per year. The old fields are falling off like Cantorale in Mexico. Two of the three largest fields in the world, Bergen and Cantorale, are in decline, and Gwar is showing its age. I could talk about Gwar for longer than we've been here today. The easy oil is gone, the expensive oil is coming. That's just the way it's going to be. The gas and diesel accounts for 80% of all U.S. transportation, so it's very important that, and frankly, I now, I speak to the decision-makers of our city because it's the decision-makers in our world that are going to, the leaders of our world are going to make the right decisions to help us do the right things. We can do, we can't just burn 1,000 barrels a second, like we are now, and think that will take care of it. Because you see, we're seeing these 60-year-olds, 50-year-old fields starting to decline now. I expect $5 gasoline within the next two to three years. So, that's not a good message. I am a board member of the Transit Alliance. Mayor Rogers Anderson asked me to do that, and I was tickled to be on that board. Mayor Caldwell Dean and Ed Cole, our executive director. I want you to know, I'm a big supporter of mass transit. I'm a big supporter of everything that will allow us to diversify away from petroleum products. And we can do it. My Prius, I just put new 60,000-mile tires on it. It's got 83,000 miles on it. I bought it in 2005 because I knew we peaked. It's a great car. But so is the leaf Nissan's making. There's a lot of great things that we're beginning to do, and we're doing it as fast as we can now, but we need to stay on course. The, Europe did not have the reserves America has. America, you've all traveled abroad, I'm sure. You come back and you say, wow, America's like Disney World. We just have this tremendous infrastructure. And we do. And it was built because we have great resources, and we still have a lot of natural gas. But Europe uses and gets around with mass transportation because they needed it. Mass transit can be very comfortable, as I put this slide together, and you can see. They use it daily. Many people don't even have to go there. But I know one thing, if we don't change our course, we're going to end up where we headed. And I put that slide on there because I am, I don't like being a person that is negative because I couldn't have drilled 180 wells over the years and be negative. But I can tell you that to believe that you'll hear a story that we have all the oil in the world out in the Western United States, and you're not addressing some of the real key issues about that. If it's, most of that oil you hear about today is being touted by securities traders saying they've got a stock for you to buy. And they'll end up in south of France, they'll end up in south of France with a nice condo in a couple of years and say, gee, I didn't know.
So, you're saying the oil is not there, then?
The oil is there. It's not in the quantities that they're trying to recommend. You see, the oil fields that you hear about, the one I hear the most of is the Bakken Formation, okay? It depends upon natural fractures because it has no porosity and permeability. Two absolutely critical. You've got to have poor space in a rock. By the way, you do know it's not a lake. It's in the rock, and it's got poor spaces, it's called porosity, and that's where the oil and gas is. And permeability is if those poor spaces are connected. And then the oil and gas can move through the rock and out into the wellbore and to the surface for us. The problem with the Bakken is that its porosity and permeability is so incredibly low. And by the way, we've known about the Bakken for 50 years. Oil and gas prices as they are gives us an ability to go and try to do some things about it. But the problem is, we have to fracture it. We have to hydraulically fracture the rock. And one of the fears we have is that there are water zones all over the world. And if you get gas, you may not like your water serving as a candle because it can get, and that's what's going on in the Northeast. So, these are some of the issues. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you, but yes, did you?
We heard a lot of discussions several years ago about possible production in the Anwar of Alaska. How much would that add to U.S. production?
There were, there's been speculation that that would, that is a giant field. No question. That's what you call a world-class field, but I'd heard projections of 300 million barrels a day, up to 400 million barrels a day. By the way, now you begin to hear, when you hear about Anwar and you hear me talk about Gwar at 4.5 million barrels a day, you begin, but at 300, 300, I said, did I say that a day? Excuse me, excuse me. That's the total reserve, 300 billion. The daily production would be about 300,000 to 400,000 barrels a day, okay? It takes a long time to get it up to speed. Now, there was an announcement just about nine months ago by the U.S. Energy Agency that said that some wells had been drilled up there instead of speculated, and they found more natural gas than they found oil. So, they've reduced the reserves to 10% of what it was.
What about, we hear about deposits in oil shale.
Yes.
What about the production of that and cost of the oil?
Can you pull up that? This is Shell Oil, Shell Oil Company had been the leader in what we call in situ process for this particular type of hydrocarbon. First of all, that shale out in the three states of Colorado, Wyoming, and Utah is not oil. It's kerogen. It's a precursor of oil. If it were deeper and in a different environment, it'd already be oil. But it's not deep enough to be oil. Don't get me wrong, it's not shallow. But what they came up with was a plan that you turn this kerogen into oil. And so, what they had to do, they put, as you can see in the center of this little graphic on the right, there's a well. The two orange-looking objects are thermal wells that they've had, this is what they call in situ. Instead of trying to mine it and bring it to the surface 1,000 feet down, they decided to try to make the oil occur by putting in these thermal wells. They have to get them up to about 300, 400 degrees and leave it there for about three years. And it begins to make oil. The problem is, it makes oil and it starts getting into everything, including the water zones. We can't afford to do anything to our water zones. We need it as bad as we need oil. So, they had to put the blue wells, which are the frost barrier wells. So, you've got a well in the middle surrounded by thermal wells, surrounded by frost, a refrigeration attempt to cause that oil not to go into the surrounding water. So, that's more expensive and a little bit more difficult than we hear some of the people on the radio talk about. And by the way, Shell kind of gave up that project about a year ago. They let the leases expire. It's not economically because it takes 1.3 units of energy to create a unit of energy. You have to burn natural gas to heat those thermal. I've taken a lot of your time.
Yeah, we'll take one more question. Carrie, I'm not asking for, maybe I'm just asking for what you think on this. There's been a lot of drilling, of course, offshore, and we've had in the last so many years increased seismic activity, even in this area, under the New Madrid Fault that we sit on, from Tennessee to Arkansas to Kentucky to Indiana, Alabama, Missouri, and I think Mississippi. But anyway, that New Madrid Fault, we've been having a lot of seismic activity there, and it's been increasing. Do you think that offshore drilling, especially down in the Gulf and our plates, is there any possibility of those plates and that being disturbed and creating disturbance to, say, these fault lines?
Well, the thing in Japan was related to tectonic plates. You've probably seen some of that. Our tectonic plates are in the Appalachian chain, that's what we see when we cross, going to Knoxville. You go over that and drop down, that's the Appalachian chain. That's the eastern overthrust. The western overthrust is out in Colorado. So, we have tectonic plates, they're 50 miles thick. 50 miles, we have to go 50 miles, and then underneath that is molten lava. But, and these things, that's what makes the surfaces and things move, they have over the millions of years, the Lord designed us the way we are. But I don't see it happening here, like you might be describing, being concerned about the plates and the, we can get earthquakes, and obviously, that earthquake was as big as they get. But I don't see it affecting us. I know that, I know that what we have to just worry about is the, what's happened that we've all witnessed for the last decade, is that the offshore environment, since we've picked up our drilling and put a lot of expensive equipment out there, it's having to deal with these hurricanes, and they've been, they've taken their toll. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking your time and coming, Carrie, and you're welcome sharing your experience.
Yeah, thank you.
You can leave this, and we can pass over to her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, moving on. We do have an executive session at 6:30, so we, we're going to go to discussion and consideration of ICMA additional investment options for employees.
This is a fairly routine addition to the portfolio of funds that we allow our employees to invest in. The pension committee has listened to a presentation on this and voted 4 to 0 to go ahead and add this to the funds. We do bring these to the board, just so you know which ones we're adding and how frequently. Normally, if we're just switching a large-cap fund to a different large-cap fund, we might not bring it and just do that administratively. But because this is a different type of fund, we wanted to bring it to you. What this adds to the choices an employee has is something that's akin to an annuity, so that as they get close to retirement, they can make a choice to join this fund if they choose and convert that into some kind of a regular fixed income, which is not really available with the other funds that are in there now. So, staff recommends that, and the pension committee recommended that we add this.
Do you make this, make this available to them on the front end? I mean, they, you explain all this to them as they go along and reach retirement age? Or do they have to come to you and say, what do you have for us?
Well, the employees that are already in place are offered sessions once a year or so with the investment advisor that we have with ICMA. New employees are, will be made aware of this and orientation.
Moving on. Go ahead.
Shirley had something.
Shirley had something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is he your representative?
Oh.
Thank you, thank you, David. Great job in this one. It is unique.
Can he come up?
If there's a takeaway, this fund is very unique in that it converts retirement savings into a stream of income. That's really what makes it unique. It can make money, that's the purpose of most, in fact, all the funds that we have, is to increase value. But this one will, in fact, do that, but eventually, if a participant would like, they can put as much, including all of their money, into this fund and then create a stream of guaranteed income for the rest of their life, including their spouse. So, it sort of builds a defined benefit into the defined contribution that it would have otherwise.
And to answer your question, Ms. Martin, when we did the orientation for the employees, Mr. Varner comes to each one of those, and he explains all of the funds, explains to them how to sign up for 401 or 457, explains that they are separate accounts, does an excellent job, has a slide presentation.
That is good man.
And he's been around several years.
Yes.
Several years. Takes one to know one. That must have shined glasses out. I remember.
Takes one to know one. I remember about it quite some time. All right, thanks. Thank you, Shirley.
My son just went by.
All right, next is a consideration of change order number two with W. L. Haley for a time extension for the Simmons Ridge Interceptor Sanitary Sewer Project.
This is just what it says, it's, they're asking for, well, they asked for more, but staff has recommended that you get 47 days, and then the W. L. Haley is wanting to stop work. The job is not finished, they have not crossed the river yet, cannot cross the river right now due to the high flows permits will allow them, so.
Is 47 days enough?
Well, 47 days is all we as staff are willing to recommend. Then if we do the stoppage, they would pick back up when they can get into the river to do that work, and they would be working on their own time with probably liquidated damages applied. So we do not think they deserve any more than that.
Will this affect their funding?
Their funding?
Whatever we have committed to this.
It does not affect our funding, what we're paying, no. In fact, if we do liquidate damages, we keep some of it.
They want it, what, 55 days?
They wanted 55 days or something like that. But, and they're at a point right now that they're asking for the stoppage, so they would still have a few days left, if they, if they.
Where in the world did you come up with 47?
Yeah.
Well, you look at the weather, you look at how many days they were unable to work due to weather, et cetera, and above average for months, it's looked at in all those regard ways as far as when they can't do work on the job, so.
I'm a little concerned about it, because, you know, we usually have a wet spring a lot of times.
Well, they're through with the pipeline operations, except for the river. As you're well aware, the river does not typically go low flow until July, August, September. So it's gonna be a while before they're back to do that type of work. They can't do it at high flows anyways.
So how's that gonna affect this contract?
The contract will not be closed, they will still be, they will still have to do the work, they have to finish the work. If they don't, we go to the bonding agents.
So they have to finish the work, and when it's feasible, then?
Right.
You're really talking about workdays, aren't you?
Yes. Well, it's calendar, workdays are calendar days, so, I mean, it's, the contract is a calendar-day contract. But this is what we have worked out with them, they have signed this, so they're in agreement with it. Well, they're accepting it, let me put it that way, so.
What about out-of-the-ground stuff in Simmons Ridge or Nichols, Nichols Bend?
Out of what?
They're not.
Are they anywhere close to this, this is gonna cause a problem?
No, and that's the reason, that's the reason that we're being probably as lenient as we're, as we're being staff-wise, is none of those projects are ready to go. It is not gonna cause us a problem as far as being able to complete the project for them to be able to ready to go. And if it does, even if for some reason, which is not foreseeable, that that gets to be a problem, then we're, like I said, we do still have the bonding company we go to.
Are there any other developments over there that depend on this?
No.
None of that, or?
No.
Moving on, consideration of updated goals for 2011, 12. Any comments?
I have, I have a couple of suggestions on this, because we looked at this on the budget finance, you know, but I don't think we ever did anything with it. I think the thought was, and if I could say, was maybe some of these kind of need to be tweaked, and so we were interested in getting some input. I have two things that I'd like for you maybe to consider. One of them would be maintain and enhance infrastructure to improve quality of life. I think that kind of fits in with some of the other things that we talked about here. The other one that I feel pretty strongly about, we have up at the top, if you look, it's one, two, three, our fourth one says maintain an undesignated reserve fund in compliance with the Board of Mayor Alderman's adopted policy, and of course, we have been doing that. And that is, to me, on the, on the policy that we have, I think that is one of the key ideas. The other one I would like for us to consider would be to maintain compliance with the Board of Mayor Alderman's adopted policy on debt services a percent of operating expenditures. Because that's the one where I think, you know, if you look in the, in our debt management policy, that's the one that has the little yellow, you know, everything else looks green except that one. But to me, that is also a very important one. If I had to name the two that I thought were most important, because some of it just says things like debt policy as a percent of per capita income or something like that. But I think that, that we're seeing, you know, that that debt service as a percent of operating expenses probably is going to come into play for us, and I think we need, in fact, we said at the last meeting that really the amount of money from, for operating expenses in the general fund was going to be flat because we were having to use more of the money that might have gone in the general fund for the debt service there. So it's just, just something that I'd like to consider. Some of the others, I think we might want to tweak a little bit, because they've been in place for a while, but those were the only two things that I kind of.
This is the loftiest set of goals.
Oh, I know, I know.
Lord have mercy, if we could do this.
Whatever I was saying.
Maintain.
I can imagine bringing this in to my wife and saying, hey, we're gonna have to consider the budget goals this year, and here they are, just three pages.
In fairness, many of these were developed back when we had most.
Exactly.
We've just kind of.
Remind me of the slide where the bug's going on.
We have done an excellent job, particularly in the last few years. Staff has really worked hard to get us in much better position than, than the direction that we were going in, can we put it that way, because of the downturn and everything. But as I say, we were thinking that we would like to get some input, you know, on these, even though they're budget goals, they really are, you know, not, as I say, plenty of non-financial ones, too.
Well, I just want to say several of these, you know, we all, we've been doing, you know, particularly relationship building with other entities and things like that, those are things that we have done in the past and will continue to do. So some of these are very, you know, gonna continue regardless.
Yeah, and it may be time to, to look at some, as we were saying, kind of tweak them a little bit. Now, some of them are, I agree with you, that there's some of them that are just pretty obvious to do. And many of them do sound really good, don't they? You know, too.
They are goals.
That's right.
And not the policy and.
Exactly.
Well, to put it in, in perspective, as far as timing, we took this to the Finance Committee in February, and we're bringing it to you at this point. We really don't adopt these until you adopt the budget.
Yes.
Which will be three readings in May and June. So this is your opportunity to really give us some feedback, let us know what you'd like to change, if anything. If there's anything that you'd like to add, we'd like to hear from you on that.
I don't think there's anything to add. I bet you've covered everything. I've never seen such a, such a list in my life. Well, to be fair, though.
Flaman, Flaman.
I want to say, though, if you look at these, even when you're talking about non-financial goals, up until maybe last year or the year before, where we talked about infrastructure, there was virtually nothing talking about infrastructure. And I do remember these goals from maybe five years ago. There was not a single mention of anything involving water, anything involving roads. And so I think some of those things, not specific projects, but some of those ideas are very important to our quality of life. And we need to, you know, that's what I kind of meant by tweaking. I mean, obviously, they are all, if we could do all these, we'd be wonderful, say.
So anybody that wants to make some suggestions, if they'll just get them to Mr. Truell, and we'll incorporate them as we move along through the budget process. Number 12, consideration bidwood trike green equipment, any questions about that? This is for a new mower, so if no questions, we'll go to a consideration of sale of surplus compost.
What I'd like to pass out is I grabbed the compost voucher that can be purchased here at the City Hall.
Is this the same material we use in the pumps?
Yes. That's what it looks like. Landscap Division, Stolen Water Division all use this compost. Last year, we produced about 2,700 cubic yards. We could not use all that, so we give the surplus away. This year, we'd like your permission to earn a little money and sell compost. And if you don't disagree with that, that's what we'd like to do.
So what's this going to do?
It's $20 a cubic yard, that's very reasonable. The people that we give to last year said they'd be more than willing to pay that. So like I said, it gives us an opportunity to earn a little money and possibly cover some fuel costs and things like that.
Could y'all physically do this? Where do you, where do you get the voucher?
The billing is where you come to purchase your voucher. You pay for it there, there's no money exchanged on the generator road, we don't want to do that. The money is exchanged here, and then whoever purchases the voucher brings it to the compost facility, and they can get up to three yards, three cubic yards.
Oh, three.
In their truck.
Yeah, we do not, we don't.
You don't do it.
I've been a customer, and it's very good.
Is this, this is just, there's no vote on this, this is just.
Just for your information, and hope you'll agree that it's something we can do.
Yeah.
Have you got wood signage out there so people know how to find it? Yes.
Okay, work session's over. We need to open the, going to executive session, so I need a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
You got those landed?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.